I was in Dallas on Thursday.
You went out?
I was in Dallas on Thursday.
You could have done that.
It's across town, but yeah.
There were several of these things.
Yeah.
One of them, you know, the least... But we... That night, the currency, I am beginning to think all were in that, all there.
And there was...
But... So I was in Allen from Wednesday to Saturday.
Oh.
You were staying in Allen, just not good for Allen.
Good.
Uh, no, uh, because I'd be so open to most of them.
Yeah.
Thank you, yeah.
Last three years.
Think currently the more water you can hire, the greater.
That's what happened, that's what happened on Saturday night.
Congratulations. Yeah, that's what I said.
Uh, that's a pretty high on it.
Yeah?
And I was told after the fact that for the first time ever, we won't pick the nominations.
Oh, wow.
Usually it's one to three.
That's awesome, though.
So I don't know, I don't know who lost, and I don't know if they'll tell me.
No, but still, that's a huge accomplishment, you know?
It's a pretty significant one, that. Very happy to be here. Do I have to see the...
I saw from my book.
Perfect. Well, that's perfect.
Oh, Lord.
That's hilarious. I love it. And has he seen the world over there with that green? Has, oh, so he should, no, he just gets to watch some of the things. Oh!
Lightbulb.
We put in crystal stools on their oak parking space.
I don't think we're doing anything.
Yeah, yeah. It has that effect on the inspiration and application of crystal stools.
I've never seen any of those movies, just not something that we're into, so we've, I've, we've never seen any of those.
I think today, what you do, the first time you see the name, you're just like, yeah, and then the next meeting, you're like, okay. So if this is the first time you're seeing that.
Oh, it's like Daryl, Daryl's out.
So, yeah, we're gonna find you down. Oh, look, it's a white shirt.
You did not get the memo. So you're, you're like Scott, you and Scott are the white shirt people. The rest of that.
David, have you came in early? You need your shirts.
I do have two shirts.
I need to see if you have more shirts.
I have the, I have the one filled.
Oh, yeah.
His sister's name is Christine.
So we don't always put nicknames, but yeah.
Oh, wow.
So when I hit that, that's a...
The question is what number one?
That's my husband's family.
I have the kitchen shirts that are, you know, have the mini back. I have those. We can do.
The only reason I know which you...
Ones like the mayor or the vault map, which are the button downs, like what I'm wearing.
Joey.
I, I do have, like, exactly that one.
Deborah will take care of getting those working. These shirts.
So it's, I mean, when she saw that one, she just fell over that.
What shirts are yours? You wear fifty-three.
It's like my mom's side. So, my mom's dad named Peter. So he has, his dad's name is Peter. His son's name is Peter. But Peter's... Oh, no, I did. Because our twin daughters were Sierra and Celeste, just spelled with Cs. And then our son, Chris.
We're ready. Hold on.
Yeah, they passed away.
She said sure. I swear she said sure.
They had a lot of...
I heard her say.
All right, we're gonna call this meeting to order at 5:30. We'll begin with a roll call.
Sheena Martinez, District One.
Hello, Kara, for District Two.
David Mers for District Four.
Herb Dyer, District Five.
And Darren Schroeder, Mayor. We're all here. If you would please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
To the U.S. flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And to the Texas flag. Under the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
And we have Pastor Gutierrez from, I'm sorry, Gutierrez from Discover Church.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for this cool weather that we're experiencing. And we thank you for this meeting. I pray that you're, uh, you would just give a, a presence of peace in this meeting, one, also productivity. I pray for our council. I just ask you, Lord, to bless them and their families for what they give to this community. Help them in this meeting to make decisions. Help them to make those decisions quickly on, on the better half of this community. And we thank you, God, for what they're doing and what they're going to do. And I pray that you will get them out of here early. In Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right, Bubba, you're next. All right, next item is citizens' comments. If you'd like to speak for citizens' comments, please state your name and your address. And just, again, I want to reiterate this every time. When people speak for citizens' comments, if things are not on the agenda, we cannot respond to them, but we love having you come down and talk to us.
Oh, that's good. Wonderful. Well, this is very important. So I've got my readers on and I've got my notes.
Great. And you'll start with your name and your address?
Oh, yes. I'm Arlene Smith. My address is 811 Lower Lacoste Road here in Castroville.
Thank you.
So, we have learned a lot, I just wanted to point this out, from our reopened theater. The films that we've watched have been very educational. We've learned about the Alsatian language. We've learned Tom Cruise doesn't age. And we've learned from my Big Fat Greek Wedding Three that we have been remiss in providing our mayor with all the safety equipment needed for him to conduct his day-to-day official duties. So a group of concerned citizens got together, maybe appropriate for him, to discuss the oversight. Therefore, I would like to present you with your very own mayoral safety coat.
I'll just say.
Is he supposed to wear that? That's what mine would say.
Oh, goodness.
Let me get one more. That's too close.
Let's keep it in the back of your car and use it.
There we go. Thank you.
Make sure he brings it home with him.
That could be a caution. Be aware.
So when he parks his car, he needs to have it out, you know?
Or we can say caution.
Yeah.
Thank you for not having the dents on the other side. That's very nice.
I will find out who's actually driving the Jeep.
No, their dog. Their, their dog.
Sammy, when you get out of the car, he steps into the driver's seat and he's like, I'm in charge. And let's be clear.
He's the chauffeur.
It is not the Jeep, it is Kerry's Jeep.
Kerry's Jeep. We'll find out who's actually driving Kerry's Jeep.
There you go.
Let that be noted for the record. Kerry's Jeep. Kerry's Jeep. I just borrowed a lot.
Because it's really cool. And she says it turns on a dime. Thank you. All right. Anybody else for citizens' comments?
Yeah, maybe.
Potentially.
They're not saying, there's nothing to see right now. They said, uh, no.
It's ready to test. The IT? It's an IT.
Was it with the plan of your... Nope, nothing been there.
Um, IT services are not until item ten on the...
Do we want to move them up? We didn't say anything.
I'll, I'll fix this.
Okay, everybody, you're down.
Everybody come over this side.
We'll trade you places. How's that? All right. Well, there's not a ton of really interesting things to see. All right. So next item is consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have minutes for September twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three, regularly called city council meeting. We have the, approve the grant resolution, declaring the official newspaper, review application for boards and commission positions, and approve the cooperative participation agreement.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Okay, discussion?
I have an item I would like to remove from the consent agenda.
Okay.
Or, do I? I have corrections to the minutes.
Okay, we'll take that out. Okay, everything else good to stay on the consent agenda? Would you?
I'll, Phil, and then I'll...
Okay. So removing, uh, do you want to modify? Does he have to modify the motion? No, we just remove that from the consent agenda? Okay. Would you modify your motion to exclude A from the consent agenda and prove everything else?
I move to approve the consent agenda with the exclusion of item A, just so the September twenty-sixth, October twenty-third. Regular call city council meeting.
And the second is amenable.
Great. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item is minutes for September twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three, regularly called city council meeting.
I have two small corrections. The citizen who spoke on agenda item number nine of the public hearing was Kenneth Lang, not Keith. And towards the bottom of page five would be the minutes on item seventeen. I indicated in my comments earlier to Deborah, but I had said something that the council can't indicate in the minutes. I want to make sure that my house gets added to my list.
Absolutely. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes with the changes discussed?
So, no.
Second.
Great. Got a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Uh, next item is mayor's report. Uh, this one got truncated a little bit with, with our, our city administrator and our mayor pro tem in TML last week. Thank you guys for attending that. So, the national lightout, we had a lot of great people that came out. We had great vendor participation. I think that we have some great opportunities for improving it again for next year. We've had some really great years and we've had some a little bit mild years. I'd say this was a little bit mild year, but the, the weather was great, the people were great, and it was, it was a really good time. I, I was really happy that people came out and supported our first responders. Judge Lutz came out and sang a beautiful rendition. He did agree that if I would sing the National Anthem, that he would jump out of the airplane.
Oh, wow.
Thinking that I wouldn't do that.
Yeah, he does not know you very well.
I called his bluff and, and he's like, I'm just kidding. I said, you don't want me to sing the National Anthem, but I will if you'll jump out of an airplane. He's like, no, I think I'll stick with my...
Am I singing the National Anthem?
Yeah. So, a couple of things just for coming up. We do have the eclipse on Saturday. We've got a great event out at the park. You still can get your eclipse glasses at the Chamber of Commerce. I think we've got them at the library as well. So, great chance to, to get involved with some really good things there and lots of good stuff coming up. So, um, next item is the council liaison reports. Uh, there was no September meeting for the airport advisory board, the planning and zoning commission. We have Councilman Kerry as the liaison.
I'm supposed to look that up and refresh my memory as to what we covered in that. There's one item on the agenda, I believe, and it...
For planning and zoning.
Alsatian Oaks Lot Four.
Yes, it was the re, the, the flatting of the index lot at Alsatian Oaks. Thank you very much. And, and it was, and it was approved for our review that later. We did. It is, we're a couple weeks later.
All right. The next one is the library advisory board from September fourteenth. We have Councilman Mers.
The library advisory board failed to form a core.
Yeah, it would be...
All right. No September meeting for the HLC?
It actually did.
Oh, they did? Okay.
September nineteenth, September fifteenth. And there were several items that came along and they, um, one of them had a new... Rest of the home is in the US. We got the back check condition. So we didn't particularly come forward with the HLC.
Okay.
Well, Brazil, Brazil was out of town on vacation. That probably just ensued, everything shut down.
It wasn't a proper meeting without...
Yeah, it was, huh?
Don't everybody work during the night, huh?
The rig days did take over and they did a job.
I see that. All right. And then finally, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board from September twentieth.
They met, but I was not able to attend. I was out of town.
Well, that's right. I, I think we need to have a discussion about Councilman Dyer's ability to vacation.
It rains when he leaves.
Oh. Okay, you can go on vacation again.
Yeah, if it rains when it's on. Goes on.
I'd like you to take an extended vacation, please. All right, next item is consider and take appropriate action on accepting a petition submitted by KF Flat Creek LP for annexation into the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction, the ETJ.
But I, I'll just mention this for, for your benefit, and that is that you'll see it says annexation into the ETJ. I'm still not sure how or why this is, but when you look at the map, and it's pretty clear on RGIS, this is to, to annex into the ETJ sixty acres. And then once that's annexed in the ETJ, then they will annex the entirety of the property. Uh, for whatever reason, even though our city limit, Alsatian Oaks annexed in, and this is immediately adjacent to it, the way I understand Texas law is that that would then, it would automatically be in our ETJ, I believe. But I haven't been able to get a good answer. This is...
This just makes it easier?
Yeah, I mean, I've heard to go and go through this motion, but in my, my opinion, it's already been in the ETJ. Or...
Okay. So with a, uh, motion and second and appropriate, uh, and approval, then they will be. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion, and I have a...
To accept the petition submitted by KF Flat Creek LP for annexation.
Where is your...
Yes. All right, great. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Great, thank you. Uh, next item is consider and take appropriate action on awarding an IT services contract. I know that we've gone through a lot of back and forth. Uh, we had a, a great committee to, to put together on this. Scott from the NBISD had helped us out. Scott Dixon led it. Herb Dyer contributed a tremendous amount. And without, I mean, I've got to, I, I know I've said this in emails, but I just want to tell you how much I appreciate all of the work you put into that. Your insight was absolutely perfect. Your, your experience really gave you a chance. So thank you for doing that. I think you made it that much better. And I know that there was a discussion all the way up until this afternoon. So Scott, do you want to take it from here?
Yeah, I'll just say that we, we had seven responses to the request for proposals. The committee met, reviewed those proposals, and narrowed down the list. Did some, I was given some additional tasks to follow up on for those respondents. And then we did some interviews as well and followed up those interviews with some fact finding, calling group references, verifying costs, et cetera. But ultimately, um, the committee came to the consensus to recommend VC Three as our IT service partner. AJ Seber is in the audience tonight. He's with VC Three. He's in sales. He doesn't know anything about IT, but he's a really nice guy. He had the mic. It's a great opportunity. Uh, no, AJ's a great guy and, and he's been shepherding this whole, whole process through, um, I, I... We, we feel like this only, you know, as far as the, the process, this only begins. This decision tonight will only begin the real work, because then we'll go through a transition process with HTS and, you know, basically install all the software and everything else that will be needed to, to manage our IT services. But we do feel like VC Three brought the most, um, two, really two or three different advantages. One is the most experienced. Their team, um, compared to, to the other respondents, really, they have a, a very deep bench, where many, if not all of their, uh, service techs are, are, are CGIS certified. And that was really kind of a big deal, the fact that they made that level of commitment for the company. But also...
CGIS, uh, just for people that don't know what that is, is Criminal Justice Information Systems. Uh, it's a certification that allows them to get onto some of the, the, like, the PD. So, having that, and it's, it's a pain to get. So having that level of support in, in CGIS areas really is...
It's equivalent of going through the process of getting clear, you know, government clearances, you know, to go through that and have everybody at that level. But, uh, that, and the thorough, thoroughness of their response and the, um, the strategy that they planned to implement for the city, we just felt like they were the best aligned to help us. But we, we really did have some very str, very strong field of contenders, and I'll be mentioning out to those who would not choose tonight. But the recommendation, recommendation of the committee is VC Three. As far as cost and, and budget implication, um, the total cost of the contract is within our budgeted, our, our scope, our budget for IT services. So there's not a huge budgetary impact there, and we're grateful for that as well.
So is there, there is a slight budget amendment with the, with the VC Three contract?
No. I, I don't, I, I think we'll be fine.
Okay.
As far as what we budgeted and what it's going to cost. I mean, if, if it's slight, it'll be very slight. And some of that will be determined as we work through the contracts and get them implemented. Because, again, how we implement and the timeframe and what that costs, there, there's still some things that I need to work out with VC Three. What shall it be tonight?
And for reference, the budget that we, our annual budget for this that we have designated?
Hundred and fifty thousand?
So we got cushion.
We're within what my uncle calls spitting distance of that number with this contract.
Yeah, we got cushion room.
Great. Uh, any questions?
Where are they hopped out of? Are they local or...
Where are you hopped out of?
Carolina.
Long Island.
Woo-hoo, hey. I'm East Coast. But we don't have assets local?
Midland, Texas.
Midland? I know that was some concerns of some staff in the event they needed. Yeah. Yeah.
They have eleven hundred municipalities that they currently support.
Okay.
Across the country.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, and, and honestly, uh, we, we had talked through this, and one of the things that they had said was, well, first of all, our, our job is to keep that from happening and finding out when that does happen. When we have, so when you have onsite failures, something goes wrong with your configuration, um, their, their goal is to keep that from happening. I know that, like, with the company that I work for, um, we have amazing, oh, just really, really good technical support, and I have never once had to have somebody onsite to handle any kind of issue. Uh, and so they do this, uh, and that's part of the sophistication of this, is they're able to do this, uh, kind of management remotely, uh, and they can help us through like that. And, and, uh, it's also to, to make sure that we have fewer and fewer of those instances. So I am comfortable. I was very, very concerned with making sure that staff was taken care of in this. And the things that we looked at, when you think about it kind of high level, it was looking at overall network and security strategy, looking at managing the, the components that go into that. And then the desktop support really should be the minor, the, the smallest of the elements.
We feel like their level of sophistication that they bring to the city and helping us with our security. And I do think security is becoming a bigger and bigger concern, not just for us, but for all the cities in TML. That they brought the most robust response and strategy to us. So that's, uh, I think it'd be an overall very good thing.
And as they explained, they have some, uh, pre-documented IT policies that we can review and implement. I think that that's where we've been lacking for a long time, is having those IT policies, having, uh, simple things like password policies and, uh, access lists, like user access reviews, and, um, what is our policy on network security and on Wi-Fi security, and all of these different things. A lot of that is helping us define that so that we know exactly what it is and that we know that if we're succeeding or failing. And so I think that that portion of it really was something that gave me a large step. Aside from the fact that we just were the only ones that really responded the way that we had.
And are they going to provide training, especially for like our library staff with their computers that people come in and use and they're going to handle what to do in the event of issues or, uh, can...
I think, well, in place of training, I, I think one of the things missing at the library is just a better security protocol. So, you know, whether the computers are wiped on a regular basis and that kind of stuff. So I, so I, I think that'll be part of it. But as far as training for security and how we deal with security breaches, that kind of thing, the, the short end sure is yes.
Okay.
Things that, not, that, not only Dave, but many of the, the respondents suffered.
And I know with going to the smart meter and everything, getting the word out that we're going to have a more robust, you know, firewall or something like that will give customers, citizens, a peace of mind. Because in this day and age where anybody's being attempted to be hacked or what have you, and their data, their personal data and everything's being compromised.
Well, just know that, that the, one thing to know about the AMI is that we have a proprietary system. So the meters that were installed at each of, the radios and meters is proprietary to our system and only our system. And just as an illustration of this, the installer ordered too many of a certain type of electric meter, and they can't do any, they're, they're junked. They can't do anything with them. We're gonna, you know, they're giving them to us, basically. We're not buying them. They overbought. They'll sit in our warehouse and as we need to replace, we'll replace. But it's because they literally only work on our system. That's another layer of security that the, that the city invested in. It's one of the reasons we chose to sense this solution, because it offered us that, that opportunity to have a proprietary channel that's only for us.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there anything else that you want to add to that?
Uh, just want to get a clarification. Are, are we accepting their original bid? Or are we accepting any value engineer reductions?
Um, that's something we're going to work through, but, but I, the committee, basically, the, the recommendation of the committee was not to, to value engineer this and, and to look at what they're providing. But that said, there are some changes to the bid. Uh, for instance, one of the things that was in all the bids from all the respondents was support of the PD laptops, and the PD laptops have gone away. We're now on iPads. So that's a reduction of around eight hundred dollars a month. Right. So that'll come out. And then we're going to look at what their, what their security solutions are to, to really get the best mix. So there might be a slight change there, but, but we're probably...
I, I'd just like to say, uh, I read all of the bids carefully, and this bid was superior to all of them for the primary reason that they really explained how they would partner with us to learn and improve and maintain our network. They were the only company that came in and had already done the analysis and put the price into the bid for the things that they're recommending we should do.
Nice.
Everybody else said, well, this is not in the bid. This is not in the bid. This has to be priced separately. But VC Three took our RFP, read it carefully. They came here and looked at our system. and they, I think they gave us a bid that's really an indication that they're going to be a good partner. And I was fearful, if you look back at the experience with the water treatment plant, when the city council found how much it was going to cost, they were insisting on value engineering the price down. And we're still paying for it all these years later. So I was very vocal in trying not to engineer the price down because then you just open the door to them saying, well, I had it in the bid. You told me to take it out. I don't want to have any of that. I wanted to be a partner. I wanted to do whatever needs to be done for the best cost. And I believe that's what we're doing.
I think we call that devalue engineering, where you make it worth less because you're not doing it right. And you're, I think that the wastewater treatment plant is a perfect example of that, where you're removing things that were actually necessary. I think that what we'll look at doing is finding efficiencies in our network topology and the number of devices that we have protected and how we're protecting them. So I think that this is kind of an ongoing thing and that's where we'll look at finding the savings, not in removing services that are critical to the security.
And the last thing I would say is that they have a deep, deep bench compared to the other bidders. So I think we're going to be in good shape.
Absolutely. Okay, anything else? So then do I have, let's see, what is the motion? Do I have a motion to award the contract for IT services to VC3?
I move we approve, or we select VC3 and award the IT services contract to them.
I'll second.
I have a motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item is consider and take appropriate action on a resolution nominating a representative to the Medina County Appraisal District Board of Directors.
So for this item, I've been in contact with Dr. Kalos. Their special meeting is tomorrow. And we can do this a couple of different ways. We can wait and try to do it later in the month. Technically, I think they're supposed to have been, supposed to be done tonight. They're having their meeting tomorrow, or October 20th. Yeah, they're having their meeting. So it's supposed to be done by October 20th. Our next meeting is obviously October 23rd, a special meeting in early 24th. What I would suggest that you do tonight is that we nominate Cindy Malone. That's the name that's been put forward by the ISD. She has agreed. So we're grateful for that. And that will, again, council, the school board will make their decision tomorrow. But we don't expect there to be an issue.
Great. Do I have a motion to approve Cindy Malone as the city's representative to the Medina County Appraisal Board?
I'll move.
All right. So do you want to clap? We have a motion by Councilperson Martinez. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And a second by Councilman Carey. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item is presentation and discussion on utility rates.
For this, I have a presentation. This is substantially similar to the one that you saw last time. The really only addition is the bill comparison at the end, which is something y'all had requested. I'm going to go through the first slide to throw the question at you and you've seen those before. And I'll point out anything that's in there. One of the questions that council asked the last meeting is how quickly can we implement this? And the short of it is probably not till January anyway, and we hope by January. The only, one of the issues is we're going to have to work with Tyler Technologies Within Code to program the new rates into the system once they are adopted by people. So there's going to have, because we're changing how we calculate the rates, that'll have to be programmed. And I'll get into what that changes here in just one second. So the rates would be effective January 1st. There's no change to the customer charges. The electric rate adjustment actually reduces the current rates, but it adds a power cost recovery factor. And I'll get into that. We'll look at the bill. When you first look at it, it looks like a true reduction. That's the first thing we'll look at in a second. And then the gas fuel adjustment will also fluctuate each month, a month as it currently does. The thing that we'll do is we'll actually add a forecast model. So that'll be visible to the customer. But what it should do for all of us is make it so that our gas bills are not quite that volatile. Now, there's still going to be volatility in the price, but we're going to do our best to forecast what those prices will be. So this just kind of shows you what the changes in the rates are. And you'll see the proposed energy charge is considerably less. That's because what you're looking at does not include the actual cost of power. So you'll see what that is in the sample bill at the end of this presentation. But this shows you that the customer charge is staying the same. And the energy charge is being reduced. So that's the electric.
Can you just reiterate for everybody inside, what inside means versus outside?
Yeah, so inside city limits, residential inside and residential outside. You'll see the charges are actually the same. We, at one point, the city did charge more if you lived outside. The PUC has taken, the Public Utility Commission of Texas has taken an unfavorable look, our opinion towards charging people more because they live outside. And as you've seen, the legislature has taken some pretty drastic steps recently about ETJs and allowing people a disannex. So in an abundance of caution, when we redid our rates at the end of 2022, or beginning of 2023 this year, we shifted away from the inside versus outside and instead increased what the customer charge was and put most of our revenue in that customer charge line. So that was the big change that we made about a year ago. So you'll see, again, inside is people who live inside the city limits, the city limits. Outside is outside. We do have a senior rate that is not going away. That is, that'll remain the way it is. Seniors do get a slight discount of, it's a percentage discount, but it's 75 cents off of the customer charge. And you'll see that senior rate a couple of places up there.
Now, one thing that we haven't looked at, we've looked at the number of customers outside city limits, but we haven't looked at the amount of charges, like total consumption outside of city rates. I don't know that it's not worth revisiting that just to understand exactly what that looks like. If you have very few, very high users of utilities and it is not something that is already in the law, I don't know that it's a bad idea to take a look at.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think, because of our electric utility, of all the utilities, our electric utility is the smallest, the CCM. So it goes all the way to the edge of Walmart. And I'm trying to think of what's not in the city limits that would actually be a consumption for electric.
Yeah, I think that we would look at that.
Are we-
Some of the residential markets are-
Are on our, they're in our electric, but they're not in our CCM.
I think there's like a little bit of residential up 471, maybe up to like the RV park.
A little bit past it, actually.
Yeah.
Creek side?
So we have, we have a limited, we have a limited amount. So, okay. So you'd like to know a breakdown of consumption by utility, inside versus outside. Commercial and broken out by commercial and residential, please.
It is also still there in the other utilities, the difference between the-
Okay. In water and wastewater and that kind of thing?
Yeah. It might be just, no.
Well, there's your gas. So you have residential inside, outside.
Wastewater is inside out.
Wastewater is different for customers.
But they still have them.
It's fine though. Is there a question? So there's your, your rates for gas. Again, the customer charge is not changing. And the energy charge, there's a slight increase on energy charge. This is to make up for the increased cost of the CPS contract that we just agreed to at the last council. And yes, David, right, there's some, there's issues. I mean, it makes a difference if you're inside versus outside for gas. And it looks like it does the same for wastewater. So what is wastewater? This is where you're going to see the largest increase. And we'll actually show you a bill. I'm frankly not looking forward to this just because people already hate their sewer bill. It's, it's very, very high. And it's going to get higher if we pass this rate increases. But again, you can see the percentage difference. So there's your sewer charge and that's per unit, right? So per thousand gallons of estimated usage. And you do that, and right now, this is a time to watch your water consumption now and for the next three months. Be careful with your water consumption because we're going to estimate your sewer charge for next year off of that, which is going up. So if you want to try to reduce that, reduce your water consumption to as low as possible for the next three months.
How much does it cost, aside from having a cover? Like how much do we charge to put inside a meter for various variations?
I don't know. It will depend on the size of the meter, but most of those would probably be three quarter and, what's that? Yeah, so I honestly don't remember. It's in our fee schedule. I don't want to say the long amount. I think it's $1,500, but I honestly don't remember. But it's in our, that's in our fee schedule.
So we should just remind people that if they're heavy irrigators, it's probably a really good idea to include that during the winter, during the next three months.
Yeah. If you have the ability to turn off your system or to mitigate the uses of that system, certainly do it during the winter. That's one reason why we do it this time of year so that people who water the grass religiously, that they aren't, we aren't catching that water, which really, which truly isn't going into our service system, it's going in the ground. So yeah, do whatever you can to lower your water consumption. So here's the water rates. Again, you'll see, we do have a tiered structure and this is part of our conservation effort. It's part of our way to discourage people from using, you know, a ton of water. It frankly doesn't seem to be doing much because, you know, people are still using a ton of water. And we haven't seen that that has impacted their use of water. Anyway. So you can see again, customer charge isn't changing, the water rate is, and the average increase looks like it's around 14% or so.
Just out of curiosity, would it be possible to, instead of a flat dollar amount increase, to instead make a flat percent increase?
We can do whatever you want.
So that like people who are using a ton of water are paying this, are paying more for the increase than they're very concerned with.
Yeah, it looks like it's a dollar oh two, right? And that's what it is across the board? Is that right? Dollar oh two?
A dollar oh two.
So yes, you absolutely could do it that way. The only thing we need to do is then run the analytics on what that, based on current conception, what that looks like for revenue, right? How much does it impact revenue? But the short answer is yes. We can set this rate model up wherever y'all want us to be. The main objective is to have enough money to pay for the system. And we have about a million dollar shortfall, so we have to make a million dollars over all our users, over all of our systems.
Let's talk about your idea of us being, you know, if you were more conservation wise, higher and higher increase, how did you all come to that?
No, it's because it's a dollar oh two across the board.
Yeah, everybody's a dollar two.
You're right. And that's David's point. It's like if you made it a flat fee at the different levels, maybe that would be better, a dollar, two dollar, you know, whatever it is. And we can certainly look at that.
So essentially it's the same percent increase for every-
So revenue would be the same, it would be distributed more.
Well, and my, one of the things we were talking about at the October 23rd workshop is water conservation. And in my mind, one of the things you could do is put those increases, weight it so it's more heavily towards people who use more water. Because that'll impact both their water and sewer.
I think it would be good to get the data on consumption, historic consumption of the asset.
I do have consumption numbers. The question is, how do you want to see that? Like I know how you said before, which was inside versus outside, residential versus commercial, right?
Percentage is in each of those categories as well, as I expected. Eighty percent of our competition's in the first two.
Yeah, that would be a good way to break it out. I don't know if, I would assume we can do that. I just don't know.
From memory, our average household is 126,000 gallons a year, which is just barely breaking the-
They have 10,000 gallons. That's about that much.
Yeah, I think we put this under the graph so that we can see the percentage.
I'm out all next week, so I will gladly give that to John and Kathy to work on. And truly, they did this. I mean, I did not do this work. They, she prepared all this work.
On all these charts where you say FY 2024, is that supposed to mean FY 2024?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Every one of these charts has got 2024 on it. And I couldn't figure out what the hell we were doing.
Herb has, Herb has just a little bit of OCD. Yeah, it's 2024. And it's not really FY.
I'd still be a drill sergeant out at Lackland Air Force Base.
I mean, really and truly, it's just start, these would be January-
I just need to clarify.
I can say R2.
Yeah.
We're already in FY 24, is my point.
Yeah, but on your title.
Another thing I would like to see in this briefing is I would like to see a written definition of energy charge and a written definition of power cost recovery factor. What's the difference between?
I'll explain that, but we do have that, I believe, in our proposed ordinance, which you don't have a copy of. So I will provide that to you. But the energy charge is literally the, like how many kilowatts you used. So that's your kilowatt hours used times the rate. That's your energy charge. The power cost recovery factor is whatever we were charged for the energy, the power, times how much you used, right? And that's the part that will fluctuate. It won't fluctuate a lot, frankly. We're with LCP. They have a tremendous history of managing their power costs. But it does fluctuate. Some of yours will go up, some of yours will go down. And if you had a snowbed type situation where markets were extremely volatile, you could experience some price fluctuation, right? So, but generally, what LCP's been able to do is manage through those to the benefit of their customers. So anyway, that's what that PCRF is. That's the amount that we pay for power that we then build directly to the consumer based on their consumption. And since that part can change month to month, then month to month we calculate it. There won't be as much variability in the electric PCRF as in the gas PCRF because gas has always been very volatile in Texas. But I'll get you those definitions. So this is the last thing that was reflected at the last meeting. This is just a side-by-side comparison of a typical bill, typically debated, but we just used some numbers here for, to give you a good idea of what it looks like.
I got a couple of questions. The 16% increase, does that take into consideration the footnote? Because the footnote adds up to about $55 on a typical bill. So it's, most of these numbers are understated by about $55.
Yeah, because none of those are changing. I say that, the garbage fee, we changed, the garbage fee went up. The garbage fee went up with this one.
The sales tax is based upon your usage, so that varies for everybody.
Yeah.
Your, the surcharge is based on your usage, so I'm just wondering, so really, this should show about $600 on the current side and about $670 on the adjusted side, and it may change the percentage a little bit. Will you add in those things in the footnote?
Yeah.
It might, it might reduce it slightly, the percentage?
Yeah, give it a chance. It might change the percentage a little bit.
But I think that, I think this is, because this is just indicative, indicative of kind of an average, so I think that this is...
Well, the idea was to, to look at just the fees, the impact of the rate increases that are being proposed, and what they have, absent all the other stuff. So I can, we can, we can, next time we show this to you with the graphs and the other things we discussed tonight, I'll show you, we'll probably bring this same slide back, and then we'll add another slide that has that other stuff on it, just so you know what they, what they, what the true cost would be on these bills. But I think part of it is to kind of get rid of the extra noise of all the other fees.
I don't want, I don't want a citizen to come in and say, "Well, you showed me the perspective changes, but you left out a third of my bill." Not a third total, but you left out all these things that I pay.
Right.
So you deceived me. I'd like to show them the whole thing, because it's going to be bigger. That's kind of the theme I've been on for six months. It's going to be a lot bigger than we expect.
Well, this is going to be big. When you look at the sewer, so just going line by line, so you're looking at the total electric charge, it went from 257.75 to 266.57. I think I put that right.
Yeah.
So there's your 257.75, and there's your total electric at 266.57, right? And we look at gas. Gas was 32.53, now it's 34.61, so not, not a whole lot of change. It was a slight increase. Total water charges, still a lot of huge change, 94.20 to 106. Then you get into sewer, and this is why watching how much water and use matters. You go from 139.99, so that's it, to 213.26.
Now, this is a winter averaging amount of 13,000 gallons.
Yes. Yeah, but they're, yeah, it's above average, but it is typical. I don't know how to say that. There are a lot of people who pay 13,000 gallons. So, but the sewer is where we're going to get people hollering. I mean, but the fact of the matter is, everything in our business has gone up, whether it's people or pipes or engineers or, everything has gone up. And we, anyway, we, the cost of doing business to maintain our water service system has gone up, and we know we aren't making any. Yeah, we are, we're doing our best, but we, we've got a long ways to go before we can say that the water and sewer systems are, they're good.
You may want to add, add to your [inaudible] bottom that also just included gas fuel adjustment charge. Again, I don't know what you're doing, but we really should go down below because that's not in there.
Well, the gas fuel adjustment charge, I think, is this, is it not?
No.
It says, the next line, the 483.
Oh, you think that is?
It says gas fuel adjustment.
483, 483.
Yeah.
Because it's consumption general.
That'd be a hundred dollars or something.
Yeah, well, and that's what we're trying to get away from, because what's happening, I mean, the way we're presently doing it, we literally, if you looked at our, and I think I showed this, in the statement for our gas system, one month we're negative, next month we're positive, next month we're negative, and we're having to make up those negatives every other month, which makes the gas real, that, what we're paying as consumers is really volatile. So we're going to try and fix that. All right, that's all I have. We're under an hour. Just wanted to pump that out.
Great. Anything else on that? Okay, next item is presentate, oh, sorry, discussion on future agenda items. One thing that we did notice, and I let Scott know about the fact that Councilmember Murch was not able to update that, so we just need to check permissions on everybody. Has anybody else had a problem with updating the future, the pending agenda items?
It was telling me I didn't have permissions, and I got voted out.
Off the ship.
You voted off the island.
Off the island. Put out a torch.
I'm too young for that.
So is there anything else?
I had an email courtesy of Councilmember Martin Esteban, who had a member of the FFW, a coster, oh, a legion, I'm sorry, a coster about the condition of flags outside of some of the city's properties, and that they were...
Tattered?
Tattered, unpresented.
Yeah, unpresented.
And we just probably need to check. I don't think that's as of an agenda item, but it's something we'll just make sure that we have presentable flags.
Well, I think it's all of our facilities. The other one is the, have you seen the fountain over at Houston Square? It's our green goo generator.
It's all, yeah, it's just a concept. It collects...
We live there. In the, in April, we're supposed to [inaudible]. At stage four.
Circulating outside water. A couple gallons of [inaudible].
So I want to put out there, on the 11th of November is the veterans ceremony for Veterans Day. It is Saturday, the 11th, at the 11 o'clock at September Square. So, is that on you?
Yes, I have it right.
So just putting that out there for everybody to put on their book, their calendar.
Thank you. All right, anything else?
We have that workshop on Monday, just be aware, 3:00, 23rd. I am out all next week. I will, Leroy, I've checked with him, he's here in my absence, so you've got Chairman John Leroy, he should something. Whatever's always.
That is on what day?
Monday, Monday, the 23rd. 1500, and also the following Monday, the 30th.
Okay, will you make sure you send out invitations for that? All right, let's do, let's do a calendar invite first and just make sure that everybody's secured it, because yeah, if it doesn't exist on the calendar, it doesn't exist to my brain. Something like that just came up. Yep. I was in agreement. Yes.
Yeah. 30 and then 3.
Okay, cool. We'll, I'll send out all those. All right, anything else? We are through the agenda at 6:22.
Wow.
We are adjourned.
I think that's a record.
Lights still outside.